I know, it gets confusing because people leave and then we change the description and the titles. And so, we've always had someone kinda in that role. Yeah. Where they fit in the pegs. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, the eight, I think.
Do you have background on this resolution?
Hillary handed that out this morning.
I'm the generalist, yep.
Oh, Molly.
Are we good?
Molly?
Yeah.
We'll hand it over to you.
Okay.
We just got it.
I have questions about it, so.
We just got it.
It's a subject of a public comment.
Morning, Stacy.
You'll get it.
That's what I was assuming, yeah.
There you go.
Tone it down a little.
Anything for you, my friend.
Tone her down a little.
I toned her down for ya. I just had to find the right button. Was it too bright? Yeah, it was too bright for Bobby. You know, it's dark up north.
Must be.
Come into the big city and it's too bright.
I'll need Braille pretty soon.
I'll get you a headlamp, okay? We'll get everyone comfortable. Yes, you have a lamp there. You might have to put that hat away, it's a bit bright.
Honestly, I'm just finished reading some dark books by Ragnar Johnson that takes place in Iceland where it's dark for six minutes. And it affects everyone's mood.
Yeah.
My uncle worked at a night shift. He'd get used to that.
It was daylight the whole time I was with him.
Good morning. is supporting community through quality public service. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any adjustments to the agenda? There being none, a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
At this time, we offer the public a chance to come before the board with thoughts or concerns. Is there anyone here who would like to do that for five minutes? Hillary? Oh, okay.
Good morning. I'm here today to ask for action on two items. The first item is moving forward with replacing our county administrator with another county administrator. In conversations that I've had with Commissioner DuKirk, Commissioner Burschain, and Commissioner Starlee, it's my understanding that a county administrator has been a very important part of how we operate here. I'd like you to continue to move forward with that rather than form a committee. I know that you've probably gotten a list of consultants, so I strongly urge you to move forward with continuing having an county administrator. Thank you. My second request to you today, as you read your mission statement, we all know that county employees play an important role. I think one of the things that this board is imperative to do is support our county employees. We should have a zero tolerance for the kinds of personal attacks on county employees. It is inconsistent with our mission statement, it's inconsistent with how we operate. Therefore, I have worked with County Commissioner Heidi DuKirk. You have in front of you a resolution. I'm asking you to look at this draft resolution, to adopt it. I think it is way past time to have zero tolerance for the kinds of personal attacks that have happened to our county employees. Every day, they get up, they operate, they perform an incredible service to this community, and when you have those who do not meet your expectations, you have a process to do it through performance evaluation. There is no place, no tolerance, for the kind of personal attacks that have happened to our county employees. Therefore, I ask you to adopt this resolution, and I think there are others who hopefully support me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, sign in and leave it to others behind.
Stacy, Hillary Freeman.
I'm Sue Hakes, and I just want to second what Hillary said. I really support the resolution as well. And I wanted to go a little bit further and just say thank you to each of you here for your work. I know that it's hard, I know it's thankless, I know it's really painful sometimes. And I want to extend a special thanks to Jeff Cadwell for his service in the community and the amazing things that he's done while he's been here. As I said, I hope you pass the resolution. None of us is perfect, in fact, we are all imperfect. Every one of us here is imperfect. And I hope that when we move forward in making decisions, whether we're part of the community, or part of the county board, or staff, or elected, that we invite compassion into our decisions and try and see things from the other person's point of view. And instead of the appalling behavior that we've seen in the community, especially regarding Mr. Cadwell, that that doesn't happen, that we reach to the other side and try and find common ground and have better understanding and move forward as a community that we can be proud of. Thanks for your consideration on the resolution.
Please sign in. Thank you.
Does anybody else from our group want to speak?
I just want to second what everybody else has been saying, that we need to immediately go for a search for another administrator. Because you all are very talented in what you do, but none of you have been educated as an administrator, and you need to hire somebody that has the full knowledge of how to run a county. And I have a second thing I want to talk about, and that is the e-cigarettes. And they are causing so many deaths that I'd like to see this county say that we will not sell e-cigarettes in our county. So, think about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in regards to the resolution?
I'm Ann Bellman, and I too support it, and I also echo everything that's been said to date and want to thank Jeff Cadwell for all his really good work in this community. It is a thankless job at times, and thank you. And I just wanted to build on something that Hillary said, and this is now the third instance in two years where I have lost friends to bullying in this community. And it's not just them, but it's also their spouses, and in one case, their whole family. And so, I agree with the resolution, and just wanted to mention that this is, coincidentally, National Bullying Prevention Month. And so, the YMCA has this flyer, and they are trying to educate kids about bullying behaviors, but it's not just kids in this community that are bullying. We have adults in this community that have been behaving poorly, and they're setting a poor example for everyone. I find it to be hypocritical, I find it appalling, and I just wanted to point out that two of the items on the anti-bullying flyer here say, the first one is, "Treat others kindly and with respect." And with respect, we've really lost sight of that as a community for some of us, and another one is, "Show support for the bullied person." And I feel as a community, we failed to support some of these people that are, have left or are leaving, in part, either in part or fully due to bullying, and it's not just kids, it's adults. And it's just, it's incomprehensible as a community. And I just hope that there's an emphasis placed on this in the future and that we do a better job. I feel like I failed, and it's a really sad thing. So, we're better than that. So, thank you.
Oh, yeah, and I talked to Emily Marshall about this program, and she said she would be happy to work with community employees, anybody that is interested in this anti-bullying prevention, and she's open to speaking with anyone, whether it's the county commissioners or anybody in this community, so.
Anyone else on this topic?
Good morning, Barb Hydeman. I'm piling on. I second the ideas that have been brought up here this morning, and also, I just want to publicly thank Jeff for what he's done for this community. I know we allow people with pitchforks to take over the conversation in this community, and I just think we need to do a better job of seeing all sides. And I can say that, you know, if you don't have an axe to grind, most of us don't show up here. But there, I don't, you know, I wouldn't say it's a silent majority because I don't know that, but there are people who do not agree with how this community has operated for the last several years, and they're afraid to show up here because they know that they're going to get booed out of this room. That's happened to me on a couple of occasions, and I don't appreciate it. So, again, we need to do a better job. The resolution is a terrific resolution. I hope you take it up and make it part of, an official part of how you do business. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to come forward with a concern?
I live up on the Gunflint Trail. I came to talk about another topic, but I would support everything that has been said so far here today. My role is a member of the Cook County Coalition of Lake Associations. We met recently, and overwhelmingly want to state our opposition to the B-to-B route, the border-to-border route. We reviewed a considerable amount of data when we went through this, and really have some major environmental concerns, mainly with invasive species coming in, with damage to our lakes, with dust, and we think it's very, very important that we pay attention to this. I would welcome the opportunity to bring information to the committee here and really make sure that everybody is really well informed when we make a decision as to whether or not to proceed with this project. I know that making a decision on this thing is going to take courage. It's one of my favorite words, is courage, and that's what I think we rely on you as commissioners, to have courage to make the right decision on this project for our environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you sign in, please? Thank you.
Good morning, citizens. I'm Mike Carlson, live in Crawfville. Been here for quite a long time and been a happy part of this community, and wanted to thank Jeff Guidewell for his service in these last years, and I hope that the board will consider the importance of having a county administrator and move forward in that process. I also like to share four words that came to my attention in the last few days, would be brief. Caring, honesty, respect, and responsibility. By caring, we demonstrate sincere concern for others, their needs and well-being. Honesty, we tell the truth and demonstrate reliability and truthfulness. Respect, we treat others as we would want to be treated and value the worth of every person. Responsibility, we do what is right and are accountable for our choices and actions. I don't think everybody has taken that kind of message to heart. The message is a simple one, it's posted on the wall of the YMCA, it is the four core values of the YMCA, and I'm happy to share them, and I believe very strongly that they are a good message for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good morning.
I wish to address some of the items in the agenda, just some questions I had as I went through it. And I know there's no public discussion, so this is the only opportunity to, I guess, ask the questions. There is a EDA budget in there, page 46 or so, and I just had a couple of questions about the dollar figures in there. There's a dramatic increase in something called rent from $3,600 to $12,000 in a year. And there's an item called TBD, I suspect that's to be decided at some point, of $4,250. Just mainly, my thoughts were why the rent, huge rent increase, and what's to be decided. My other question was regarding the... Oh, and, pardon me, as part of that EDA thing, you, there's a listing there of lots that have been sold. I was just curious as to how many lots are still available to be sold, and talking about homes, how many homes are still on the market from those first projects. I was also wondering about the administrator vacancy, and it looks like you might be... I'm just wondering when and how the staff was going to get a chance to have some input, or maybe they already have. And when you talked originally about looking at that position, it was to try to get as much input and feedback as possible before you made your final decision. So, I just want to be sure that all the people that wish to have some input have had that opportunity before you move ahead and make your final decisions. It looks like we're adding a staff person, although that's not what it says here, but in trying to work through all these needs that we have, that we're talking about now a HR director, which is something we didn't have before, that was a role that Jeff played. But now, we're looking at hiring an HR director, and I, as I looked through it, I couldn't see whether this was a temporary or a permanent position. Is it a 40-hour-a-week full-time, or is it part-time? What are you looking at doing there? All in all, it does look like we are adding another staff person, so whether you promote internally and then have to fill that internal promotion with another person, it's another staff person. That's all my comments for the day.
Thank you. So, on the resolution, I will pass this on to Molly, and have her look it over.
Molly already has it.
Okay, thank you. And the second issue is that, yes, we're moving forward with lots of questions to everyone. This Thursday, we are meeting with our HR, with our department heads, so we're moving along step by step. So, moving along, meaning we'll move on to Brady. And... Oh, sorry.
Consent agenda?
We have to do the consent agenda. I'm moving along too fast because they're moving out. Would anyone like to pull anything on the consent agenda?
I would like to pull items... I guess I just have a question, I don't need to pull an item. I noticed on item F, the annual liquor license renewals, the bottom of the second page there after the listing of the applicants, it has a little yellow part that says, "All subject to Appical Attorney, Sheriff approval, Town Board approval, liquor liability insurance, workers' compensation compliance, and the compliance with local and state ordinances governing liquor licensing." That makes sense to me. Looking up above on item E with the annual cigarette license renewals, there's no little yellow part there. And I thought that might be important, considering our discussion around potential ordinance changes regarding tobacco. I didn't know if that was important or not, but I wanted to...
Yeah, it just indicates it's not an ordinance currently to do any of that, and there must not be, I haven't studied the statute, there must not be a statute similar to liquor, you know, that it goes before the various boards and sheriff, et cetera, so. Yeah, good point. Certainly open to looking at, making changes.
So, if we have an ordinance, then there would be a little yellow box next time?
Depending on what's in the ordinance.
Yep. Adam Cheer, as long as he holds that up for discussion, as I do every single year just for the record, I am the bookkeeper at Gunflint Pines and Skyport. We just make note that there's no funny business going on here.
Okay.
Otherwise, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Alrighty, Brady, now you're on.
Well, I will turn this over to Mary Sondas, who is here to present for the EDA's budget levy request.
Okay. Morning, Mary.
Morning. You have the proposed 2020 EDA budget in your packet, and the second page, excuse me, with some, just notes to reference how things are going at the EDA. The request is for 3% more than last year. Basically, we just want to continue to do the same kind of work that we've been doing, supporting the development of housing and businesses in increasing the tax base in Cook County. As you see there in the notes, we're pretty proud to share that we have raised $1 million in grants per year for the last three years. That's pretty helpful to bring our projects forward. We've sold those seven lots in the last three years. Got a couple of people kicking tires right now. There's always somebody coming in the office and asking questions and visiting the business park. It's really been fun to watch things develop there. I don't know how many, you know, some days I think I should do better, I should know how many lots we have in the business park, but there's probably another dozen, I don't know. I don't know the number of lots. That's a good, probably something I should, like, embed in my brain. Yeah, and we have 26 new homes, the 10 homes in Grand Marais and 16 apartments in Luton. The apartments are fully rented, the homes, two of them just went on the market, I think last week, they just were finished. And so, those two are for sale, and there's one left of the original eight, and I believe they're working on a purchase agreement for that one right now. And I don't have, well, the golf season isn't over, so I don't have end-of-the-season numbers for the golf course, but on the days when it hasn't rained, the golf course has been very busy. We're close to budget there, so we'll see, we'll have, we can report more at the end of the season. The two changes that we have in the budget for the coming year, we put more in the line for the office because there is a possibility that we might have to all move out of City Hall this year if the city council moves forward with their building project. So, we just put that increase in rent because we know that we're not going to find any place else to rent for $200 a month that we pay to the city right now. It's just not out there. So, anticipating that we might be moving. And then, under the staffing, we might want to bring on some additional help this year. There's been some talk about creating a Housing and Redevelopment Authority, and that's something that just, it just is going to require another person. I just can't take on another full-time job, so. That $4,000 that's in there isn't really going to pay for us to bring on a full-time employee, but it's anticipating that, you know, at some point, we might do some, adding some help to the organization, so. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. The end of the golf season is when for Luton?
Well, I hope, you know, depending on the weather, but they usually try to stay open through MEA.
MEA, mhm.
Yep.
Okay.
So, if it stays mild, what, you know, if we don't get snowed out.
And the TBD was asked this morning to be, yeah, should you just answer that? Yeah. Okay. Questions, comments?
Commissioner Mills? Thank you for answering those questions, and I was just hoping to, I mean, are you looking for places outside of City Hall?
I've been looking around casually for about a year, just the space that I work in is not very comfortable, it's really small, it doesn't have a window, you know, it's just not... So, I have looked at a few places. It's not urgent that we have had to move yet, but...
Writings on the wall.
Yeah.
That's why I was wondering if you've kind of seen what's out there, is there any options?
I've looked at a few things.
Okay, okay. So, there are some options.
There are.
There are.
Yeah. And then I do appreciate the 4250 for the HRA discussion because that is kind of, I think, the next step. And maybe, I'm not privy to all the EDA conversations, but maybe, you know, we're not quite ready for that, but I appreciate this being put aside, moving in that direction. I would just question if it's enough, but it sounds like things aren't that far along yet, so, you know.
Right. Well, and, you know, I would guess that if we did find the path forward with that and decided that we needed to bring on an employee, then maybe we would take some of the funds from some of the other line items in the budget and reshuffle things a little bit to make that employment possible. I suspect it could be, it could start with just a half-time position, not a full-time position.
Or a contract or...
Or a contract, yeah.
Yep. And possibly grant-funded contract matched with that. But is it a possibility that could happen this year or this coming year, 2020?
It's possible. Yeah, we've been talking about it. Jeff has introduced this concept to us and has given us some information, shared some connections with that we, people that we can reach out to. And there's general agreement that it's a good idea. It just, there aren't enough hours in the day for me to even explore it, so...
Right. And I guess that's where...
That's what I was about to say. Mary only has so many hours in her life.
Yeah, and that's where I was going, is what is the barrier for that to happen?
That's all. Just to move it up on the list of priorities.
Okay.
And it might take a committee and take some of it off of Mary's plate and have us sit down. I mean, we've got a couple committees in the EDA where we work through things, and maybe that's the next step. But we have so many things happening right now with the new businesses coming into Cook County, with the houses, with the apartments, with the ribbon cutting, with the other houses getting done and planted and all the things associated with that. So it's not easy to juggle all the balls.
Yeah, I just want to be sure that the staffing budget is not the barrier.
No.
Okay.
It isn't. It's just to move that up higher on...
Yep. You've got to finish what you've got going first, or, yeah. Thank you. That's all.
Commissioner Burris? Well, thank you. First of all, I want to commend you, Mary, for all your great work. I serve as alternate to the EDA, and I've been at some meetings. And I know that housing has been a major concern of, I think, we as commissioners and a lot of other people in Cook County. And the board, in working with others, has done a commendable job. Really want to thank One Roof Housing. Our efforts there, I think, have been, you know, really good for our people and have set a model that maybe we can pursue as far as being, you know, cost-effective and meeting the needs. And I would assume that, it's a question, I guess, is that, I know that the city is talking about housing, and I just heard something on the radio this morning about that. And so being a joint powers, that funding could be a cooperative venture, which I assume it has to be. So there could be some additional funding coming from the city with the housing and Development Authority.
Yeah, there could be. Yep, we, when we started the Nordic Star Development here in Grand Marais, the city and the county met with the EDA, and both bodies agreed to support the homes at $25,000 apiece from the community. So there, we started with a plan for seven homes. And the city and the county contributed $175,000. And it was, if I remember correctly, it was 100 from the county and 75 from the city. And what One Roof is talking about now, it's very early in the discussion. I almost hesitate to say this because they haven't progressed far enough to commit to it, but they're looking at building apartments at Nordic Star next summer. And we will be meeting with One Roof and inviting someone from the city and the county to join us on October 23rd. I have not reached out yet, I don't think, with that invitation to the meeting. But one of the things that we'll discuss at that meeting is how the, so we have housing money in our budget, which is, comes from the county. And then at what level the city might be able to participate will be a question. So there, they know that question is coming now.
I would just like to also follow that up and say, as a commissioner, I think I'd really encourage you to pursue that, and I'm sure you will.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
That's a very important issue in our community.
They were very willing partners in the first round, so...
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else? Comments on the budget, more details you want to know?
The EDA meeting today is at 4:00, and we love people to join us, so we do amazing things.
Bobby's got a question. Yes?
And how many houses are left over here, for example?
Three of 10.
Three out of 10?
And two of them just went on the market last week. They just finished them, so...
And then the other, I had the same questions as Arvis, on the other ones.
Okay. And did I, I answered them all? Okay.
Okay. Are we ready for a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion, if I may. Okay, to approve the EDA budget levy for 2020.
I'll second that.
Any further comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mary.
So at this time, we have Molly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have one item already on the agenda, which is addressing the county administrator vacancy. My question for you is, do you want me to address the proposed resolution this morning? Or otherwise, I'll just wait to see if a commissioner adds that to the agenda, and I can address it at that point.
I was going to add it under Commissioner Concerns.
Okay. Then I will wait. So what I've brought before the board in your packet is some recommendations, long-term and shorter-term, for what to do about the county administrator vacancy. Document here. So Mr. Powers and I have been meeting, Jeff, Brady, and I have been meeting, and I've talked to a couple department heads. What's come out of that is that I would recommend, in the short term, that the board appoint an interim county administrator. And I would recommend that the board create a transition committee for the purpose of exploring options for county government structure, making recommendations to the board, choosing one of those consultants to work with, and coming back to the board to educate and discuss further. Some of the public comments suggested that you move forward today with filling that vacancy. That's certainly an option. The reason I'm recommending this is because I've seen interest among commissioners in having further conversation before moving forward to hire a new county administrator. The third recommendation, which is actually listed as number one in my summary to the board, is that the board consider changes to the Human Resources Department. That recommendation, I would ask that Mr. Cadwell describe what exactly he's intending for that. We have a specific individual that we would request that the board appoint as interim county administrator, and that's Rena Rogers, our current Management and Information Systems Director. She, you know, we decided that we should go with an internal candidate for this position, someone who's generally aware of county operations and has been involved on a higher level with a lot of these projects. Rena has the background of a project manager. She's capable, and she's agreed to do this, should the Commissioners appoint her. She also has a really excellent staff who can take on the, take on some of her duties to make that possible. The concept of an interim county administrator is that this person would not necessarily bring forward new projects or spearhead, you know, new action for the board, but would be a facilitator for if county department heads wish to bring things forward. Primarily, her job, though, would be to not drop the ball on any of the current projects and obligations that the county is involved in. Make sure those keep moving forward without stalling out. Make sure that there is a body, a person, to sign at the line for any of the obligations created for the county administrator through the employee handbook, through contracts that we have, through various statute and law that refer to county administrator. You know, Jeff's seat will be empty as of next week, and we won't have anyone unless the Commissioners decide to appoint an interim county administrator. Regarding the transition committee, should the Commissioners move forward with that recommendation, what I would suggest is that committee would have two Commissioners, two department heads, myself. You know, you have the option to add Pamela Dixon, who is experienced and educated in organizational development. You have the option of adding Brady, because Brady has a good and historical understanding of all of the various financial obligations that the county administrator has to have a good handle of. So the reason I suggest a committee and not the full board to explore this is because a committee has a lot more flexibility for scheduling meetings. It's kind of a nightmare to schedule, as we saw last time when we scheduled this Thursday meeting. It's a nightmare to schedule all five Commissioners and a number of staff. You could move a little more fluidly. And I think that the transition committee could come back with a recommendation for a consultant, if that's what the board tasks the committee with. Could come back with a recommendation by the end of October, the last meeting in October. The committee could, the board could assign the committee different timelines, different tasks. So Jeff, did you want to address the human resources change that's recommended?
Yeah, I would. Thank you, Attorney Hickon. One, just to reiterate the first two points that Attorney Hickon brought up related to an interim administrator and a transition team. One is the governance structure of counties is set by Statute 375A. And at this point, Cook County is an administrative form of government, which means on October 15th, there's nobody who has delegated the authority to sign the things that you have delegated to the administrator to sign and do and make happen. And Molly brought that up. I just wanted to tie it back to the statutory reference. Be in conversations with Brady and with Molly. Identifying somebody internally for a transition makes the most amount of sense, as it's the least disruptive and most supportive thing to do for our staff. And I know that these periods can be disrupting. I have every confidence that Rena could do that in the short term and would do a very good job, and would she be very keenly aware of the impact that this was having on staff? I think you guys all know her reputation related to supporting staff, and that's an important feature. Third, the changes related to the HR department, as we'll get to down the line, is looking at the HR Director job description. And the proposal is for an HR Director instead of an HR Generalist. It is not adding staff. It is changing from one position to the other and only having one filled. As we discussed during my performance review over the last several weeks, there are a lot of things that come to my desk that don't come to a lot of administrators' desks, and the HR Director is a more common organizational form in northeast regional counties and counties throughout the state. What that means is essentially would push the bar of HR functions from where it was set with the HR Generalist up to the point that the only HR issues that come to the administrator's desk would be things related to conflicts or grievances, at the point that they're specified in the contract and not a lot of the day-to-day stuff related to discipline, supervision, employee engagement, and development. So later, we're going to get to having that conversation. One thing to keep in mind is, and we figured this out when we were looking at payroll, we don't normally consider this an organization with 150 employees. But it is an organization with 150 employees. When you count all of the aquatic invasive inspectors and all the temporary people that work in all the departments, and all of the, all of the staff that are supported that aren't necessarily direct county staff, like Soil and Water, we process payroll and manage HR functions for 150 people. And that's not a part-time job. That's a full-time job. So that's, that's what I would add to consider here in this conversation. Later, we're going to, we're going to ask for some specific action related to that, but that's what I would offer now.
Okay. Thank you both on that. So, yes.
When you're ready for conversation.
Okay, well, I'd like to go right to the transition committee discussion.
Okay.
Since we'll talk about HR later. What are your thoughts about that, the two Commissioners?
Being that I've done this a couple of times.
Well, so you've had experience.
Right.
What experience tell us?
So start at one. The last two times that we hired a consultant to discuss form of government, first with Janet, Board Secretary Retirement, in those discussions with the consultant, it was very intentional to have the position of Administrator HR, both times.
I'm sorry, together?
Together.
Okay, thank you.
And we were told when we went through the discussions that that is a hard position to fill that way, because many counties don't operate that way. They have them separated, as we're now looking at.
Why was that, like what?
To save money was the biggest. If they're both one position, it's perceived that we're saving money.
So that was the, were there other factors? Or, I mean...
We had Amy here that took on a lot of the roles and the functions, and we had less staff than we do now. So was able to fall under that, and we got applicants qualified to do it. So we were able to stay with those choices. Between the transition from Janet to Jay and Jay to Jeff, we as a county functioned without HR or administrative specifically pointed out. I'm not recommending that we do that again. I'm just telling you, we have, we have done it, and the sky didn't fall. And then my only comment on this is that we very intentionally, up to this point, have said we want to include the staff in this discussion. And I am not for making any of these changes or approving any of this today, because it's two days away when we're going to sit down and talk to our staff. And I know from other big decisions that we've made as a board, that we have had very good information, that we have... The decisions weren't bad decisions. They were very good intentions, decisions, and they were very good for the county, and they were the right decisions. But when we say we're going to include the staff and then we make decisions without them, I know that that has created some distrust between us and the staff. And so, so I don't have an opinion or a decision on any of these, but I don't think that we should make these decisions today. And since we're holding a special meeting, we have the ability to make those decisions on Thursday with the staff.
So what I hear you saying is then, because we are scheduled to meet with the Matt Team, Department Heads, that we not form a transition committee at this point. We take those responses and concerns and thoughts, and then where would we go with that? that?
We are holding a special meeting on Thursday, so we can make all those decisions on Thursday. I will tell you, at this point, I'm adamantly opposed to us having a committee. Um, we all have a ton of committees amongst other responsibilities and as Molly said, it's hard to get everyone to meet and get together. And the last two times we did this, we did it at the board meeting and we were able to make those decisions. And I think forming a committee is just going to make it longer. I think that we as a group can make these decisions during our regularly scheduled meetings and if we have to have additional special meetings, you know, we've, since the last times we've done this, we have eliminated one county board meeting, which is the third Tuesday. So, if we need to add that in going through this process to have a board meeting between public health and committee of the whole or however we do it, then we do it to get it done. But I just know between juggling everything that we all have to juggle, it may seem easier to have just two commissioners meet with staff, but... And my other issue, and I don't mean to be disrespectful to all of you, but we have committees where there's two commissioners and we bring items forward for full board approval and then we hear after the fact, "Oh, well, I didn't know what I was approving." And I don't want to have that happen with this decision. I want to have the community know fully that we have all been part of the decision and that we have all intently made these decisions as a group and that it didn't come forward from two people.
Okay. So, we, um, we're, what I'm hearing is that we are already scheduled for Thursday at 1:15 to meet with the department heads. We all will hear them. We all have questions. And also out in the community to discuss with folks, um, what their opinions are, how they feel about it. So, we take all of that and wrap it up, are you saying perhaps by the 24th, our next board meeting?
I think once we get the input from the department heads on Thursday, we can make some of these decisions.
We can move forward at least to a point. How about other thoughts on this? Commissioner DeChambeau, what do you think about this?
I agree with Heidi. I, we're meeting with the employees on Thursday and the, I don't know, to even have this on the agenda today, it was really something.
Well, it's something to think about. I mean, we're throwing out a ton of ideas.
We were all thinking about it, apparently.
You know.
But, uh, you know, we, we're, we're meeting with the staff in two days and if it takes...
Well, just department heads, not the staff.
Whatever.
Okay. Well, it's still staff, yes, but I think the greater staff also, at various times, we can meet them too.
Yeah. We need to figure out which direction we're going.
Right, right. Okay. Commissioner DeChambeau?
Yeah, I, I, I think, uh, going forward is, it's a good process in talking to the Matt team, uh, this Thursday. But I have a question and I think we also need to consider the recommendation that's come from County Administrator Cavell, um, to respect his input and, and his past work. Having worked a lot in administration and on boards, other, you know, various boards that it's important to have some kind of signing authority, um, and meet those legal responsibilities and we are committed to an administrative form of government, so I think we need to keep that in the discussion. Um, and, and my question to Attorney Hickon is, um, with these recommendations, uh, has this come from meeting with a group or has it been general discussion with, uh, the department heads at all or, um?
This recommendation comes after meetings with Brady and Jeff.
Okay, all right.
And then Rena.
Rena, okay.
Yeah. Once we identified her as a candidate.
Well, I, I think then that, that, I would just like to speak, that that's a, a consideration we don't lose in this process because I think it's really respectful of the past work that's been done and the kind of a government that we have. We may want to do something else, but I think we have some legal authorities that we have to keep in mind. Uh, and so, things were different in the past than they are now and we have to keep that in mind going forward. But I, I think it's really a good suggestion to have this as a topic of discussion on Thursday.
Any other thoughts?
I, I really appreciate, um, this on the agenda today. I know it might seem like we're jumping the gun, but I think it's important just to get it out there and, and look at them. Um, but I do wholeheartedly agree that we should wait till Thursday, um, for taking action on this. Just so everyone knows where I'm leaning, um, from what I've seen, I think the administrative form of government is, is, makes the most sense, but when we come through a large transition like this, I think it's important to look at all the options. I don't expect that process to be very long.
Don't jinx us.
Yeah. But, but that's, I think it's important to look at everything. And then, um, I, I think of number two, the, the interim county administrator is very important just from what Commissioner DeChambeau just said, we do have a, a legal, um, we, we need to have a signer and, and that's the form of government we have now and, and to Jeff's recommendation as well. I really like the, um, the suggestion of the change to the HR department. That makes a lot of sense through the discussions we've had or as, as a board with, with, uh, Jeff's review as well as just conversations I've had with Jeff about his workload. Um, and, um, as far as, um, the committee is concerned, um, I guess I have a question I'm expecting to rely heavily on, um, a consultant, a professional consultant. After, assuming that we hire one, um, what role would the committee play or, or how would, um, Brady, Molly and Jeff, how would you see the committee's role after the consultant? Is that a more regular, I mean, is the consultant going to be interacting with the committee more than, than with the board or is this committee just to even just get the consultant?
I would answer the question by saying it's completely up to you.
All right.
But I would also suggest that Chisago and Isanti counties are currently involved in searches for new administrators and you all have peers or contacts or phone books and, um, you might want to check and see what other people are doing.
Well, I mean, when it comes down to it, any and all these decisions are completely up to us. We're just looking for department head input, um, staff input, public input, um, and I'm, you know, asking for your input now about what the role of the committee would, like, how do you see?
From my, from my understanding during the last search, um, Janet Simonan provided a lot of administrative support to the consultant to be able to schedule things and make things happen and make sure that everybody was notified. Um, the committee would be able to, um, to do some of that in, in between the regular board meetings where those recommendations and that research and that, uh, that information would be shared with everybody. So, um, it's, it's, it's a very common practice. As a matter of fact, when I was at the county administrator meeting last week, uh, all of the administrators are saying, "Why didn't, why didn't they establish a search committee the day that they got your resignation?" They'd be a month into the process of at least knowing what they want to do.
At least two of us wanted to do that.
So, it's a very common practice. Um, and the, the best recommendation I could make is, is, is check with your peers who are going through a similar thing.
And I've had, I've had a strong public comment, uh, regarding that too. I think, and my understanding as where the board was at, um, was that we, we wanted to respect the, the department heads' opinions before we went through with anything. And so, yeah, it does slow things down a little bit and I regret that a little bit, but I, I, um, I want to respect the department heads', um, opinions before we make any of these bigger decisions.
I guess a question, but also I guess a comment or many comments. I think there's two issues here. There's, there's the search process and there's what do we do in the interim in that process? And I don't think they're one of the same. I know that, uh, having consultants are, is very important in a search, but I'm really trying to figure out how they would help us with our governance in the interim. Uh, it would cost a tremendous amount of money to have them weekly on contract.
Commissioner, the, the intention is not, would not, they're, they're two separate things, you're exactly right.
Right, right.
The consultant would help lead the conversation with you and the staff and anybody else you wanted to include on what form of governance and then a search process and an interview process. They would not be contracted with to govern on a daily basis.
Yeah, I understand that and I, and I think that's my concern. And, and it might be helpful to have someone come in and work with us and say, "These are the options," but I think we're sort of committed to going to an administrative form of government of some type, uh, and we're going to set up an interim kind of way of operating. However, if this proposal for having an interim period is for us to discuss amongst ourselves, especially with staff, maybe public, you know, what form of government we want to go with before we go to the consultant. So, I see that as another issue. So, maybe Molly, you could clarify your intention with that.
Madam Chair and Commissioner DeChambeau, um, the county board passed a resolution several years ago to establish a county administrator form of government. That is the form of government that we have currently until the board changes it. We're not going to have any kind of a hybrid in between, in the transition period. At least, that's not what I'm recommending and I don't hear the intent for that. Um, we need somebody to stand in the shoes of the county administrator because that is our form of government until it changes. Um, I, I also wanted to respond to the, uh, Commissioner Mills' question about what our feedback would be about the role of the committee. First of all, I heard a reference to, you know, we have a lot of committees. That's absolutely true. This is a committee of a temporary nature. Um, I'm calling it a transition committee because the intent would be, once you've made your decision and made your hire, if there's going to be a hire, the committee's duties end, right? So, um, whether that's three months or six months or six weeks, um, that would be the duration of this committee and that's just what I anticipate. You are in control of how you assign the duties to the committee. If you were to decide to retain the county administrator form of government and hire a new one, the committee might be well-suited to work with, um, the consultant through the hiring process, schedule interviews, that kind of thing, but of course, the whole board would probably want to be involved in any interviews of any final candidates. Um, a consultant who is doing their job is going to need frequent contact with the county in, in planning things, um, and strategizing and there should be a point of contact for that consultant. This committee could be the point of contact. And what we've talked about is that the consultant, um, would have the role in coming and educating the board on the various forms of government under Minnesota statute, um, answering questions about that, talking about how it happens in other counties. Um, you know, they might study what's happened in Cook County in the last five years or historically and say, "I think it fits. This government fits, this one doesn't," that kind of thing.
Okay. Commissioner DuKirk?
My comment about the fact that we have a lot of committees is the ability to stick another one in. If you just want to look at my calendar, where there's a spot to stick another committee, I mean, we can all make it happen. If it's important, I know that we'll make it happen if that's the decision of the full board. And after selecting and having a resolution of administrative government, we went without for almost a year. So, your concerns, Myron, we, we give signing authority. We make decisions as a board. Scheduling with the consultants, how that happened in the past when we didn't have an administrator to do it, was the consultants came to a board meeting and we set the schedule, just like when we set the schedule for the budget and we pick when we're going to have meetings. We pick when we have times when we're all here that it fits in our schedule. And we have April in the office. We had Julie in the office. I know that April is as competent and as talented as Julie is and she can help us out with getting the scheduling done.
Okay. Question with that or a comment too, um, is if we propose that the board meet, instead of having a transition committee, it's going to be far more scheduling difficulties than two?
It's during a regular board meeting. We're already here.
Okay. Then my question is, would we be operating as an administrative form of government if we were going to operate by board meetings?
We did it last time.
I, I just question a clarification there. I don't know that you two understand each other.
That's the statement of the year. Thanks for setting.
I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, right.
Trying to seek better understanding.
Right. So, I don't think...
And its implications.
Yeah, I don't think Commissioner DuKirk is suggesting, um, administering via the whole board.
We're not the administrators.
Right. I think, I, I think what, what Commissioner DuKirk is suggesting is rather, I think she's having some skepticism with the transition committee and would rather you have the entire board as the transition committee, more or less.
Mm-huh.
Um, and, and what your concern is, what do we, who is the official signer in the interim? It's not the whole board. We would...
Okay.
...assign an interim.
I would, I think the question is, and I think I'm, now I'm saying that we would have an interim administrator under what you're proposing.
We haven't made that decision yet. It's a possibility.
Okay, but I think that's something we have to decide.
Yes.
Because that would be, I think, answer the question. Secondly, um, if we do this as a board, then are we excluding having, you know, some department heads, the county attorney, possibly the, you know, resources or Brady, um, as proposed in number three? So, you're saying instead of having other staff involved, it would be just the authority of the board to serve in this transition?
Molly and Brady are present during our board meetings, so they wouldn't be excluded. They rarely miss a meeting and the staff is always welcome. And during the last two processes, the staff did come in and become a part of the conversation as they choose to. So, we're not excluding anybody.
Okay. I'm trying to understand better. Thank you.
Okay. Here's the way I see this. We're going to meet on Thursday.
Yes.
We're going to have a discussion with the, um, department heads. Once we have that discussion, then among us, let's talk about how we're going to move forward with an interim, um, and then what our next step will be at that meeting on Thursday.
And we can make motions on that meeting.
Does that sound like a good plan for now?
Yeah, I would, I would add just one, one more thing that I think we should, um, uh, I value these recommendations a lot. I don't know enough about the challenges of committee versus board. I respect that, um, the committee is going to be more flexible. I also respect that, um, commissioners can feel left out of the conversation if it is only two commissioners and so I think it might behoove us to talk to AMC, talk to our peers, as Jeff suggested, and, um, and know that this recommendation is coming from our attorney who is, uh, looking out for the best interests of the county as far as risks and, you know, all that kind of thing, so, um, yeah.
Yeah, one more question. If we go that way, I, I would ask that instead of each one of us talking to, trying to get ahold of the commissioners in those, uh, counties where they're having this process, that we have a board member do that and see what they're doing there? I'm not a board member, a, a staff member. Is that a reasonable thing to do?
I think that's out of line.
Okay.
Our staff members are already busy.
Well...
I mean, we're going to our district meeting next week. Other counties have gone through this process.
But I think there are some specific ones mentioned.
Madam Chair and, um, Commissioner DeChambeau, you could also just assign those duties to one of your, one of your own group. Um, Heidi, will you contact this county or, um, Commissioner, uh, DeChambeau, will you contact this other county? I think that it's, there's great value in you talking to your peers from your own perspective as a commissioner, speaking to them and their perspective as a commissioner. Um, your, a staff member may not know the kind of questions that are in your mind that need to be asked.
So, that was Chicago?
Chisago.
Chisago.
And Isanti.
Isanti.
And Sandy.
Thank you.
And then that commissioner could report back.
Commissioner Duke.
Along Molly's comments of having different perspectives, with all due respect, I think that my perspective in speaking with other counties would be very different from Commissioner Burschheim's perspective, so.
Okay, so once we get rolling here and get a feel for everything, I think we'll be having, you know, more directive from staff, department heads, ourselves and everything once we get into Thursday and what we do then, so.
Thank you, Jenny.
Any other comments? Otherwise, you look like you want to say something.
I think we'll have a better understanding of what direction we're going after Thursday, so.
Sure. Right. Okay.
I'm hoping to have some movement on Thursday.
Movement.
But I guess we'll see.
Well, you know, Commissioner Mills, one thing we have to consider is that everything takes time and time doesn't mean money. Time means that we step back. And I think as a community, we need to do some healing and we need to ask ourselves and as a group, how do we move forward? And so Thursday's our first step to do that.
There's also the old saying of beating a dead horse.
Okay. You probably have a good old Gendry saying for me. So Jeff, we have A, B, and C. Do you want to take those in order or do you want to do a couple of them and then come back to A? It's your prerogative.
Madam Chair, we can, we can walk through the first items first or we can start at the top.
It's up to you.
Truly, that really is up to you, but that's okay. While we're sitting here, let's, let's jump to B. At our last meeting, we approved putting our part-time custodian into a full-time position in the evening, which left the part-time position vacant. So this is requesting approval to post a part-time custodian. Rich was working anywhere from eight to 15 hours, so this is approving a part-time custodian not to exceed 20 hours is what the request is for, for a little bit of flexibility. Can I take questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the posting for part-time custodian.
Support.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, regrettably, we received a resignation from James Zimmer due to having another opportunity in the community effective 11/4. So we're asking to, for the motion to approve the resignation and approve the posting for the vacancy of his position.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Commissioner Duke.
This is kind of one of our newer positions. It was a great position and he was a great fit in this position. And he's accepted a job that will also benefit us. That's a great fit for him and it's an opportunity. I asked what the change in position was because as our conversation was this morning, he had community members make comments to him about things going on. And so I was worried that this was a person who was leaving our employment due to bullying in our community. I'm very glad that that's not the case, but it's just a reminder to all of us. It's really sad when a commissioner has to ask if an employee is leaving because they're being bullied. That's all I got.
Any other comments or questions? We've had a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Okay, Jeff.
Madam Chair, the steps for approving a job and filling a vacancy are laid out in the employee handbook. And the job description of HR director is before you today and there's a couple of points, there's a couple of options. I've discussed with you why I think an HR director is the right organizational method for this group right now. If you go the route of having an interim administrator from the ranks of the department heads that we have here, it's going to be really important that they have the support of a skilled HR director and that they have the support of our county attorney. So for transition, again, this might not be something you decide you want to, you want to approve today, you might want to consider and act on later, but the HR director job description came from Lake County and then has been reformatted to fit our template and our method. And today, the first thing to do would be to ask you to approve the job description. And the second step would be to approve an internal posting for that position if you were interested in doing that. Those would be the two steps we'd have to do before we could name somebody to that position.
This hasn't gone through the personnel committee, just so you're all aware. Normally, job descriptions go through the personnel committee.
Yep. Which is why it might be appropriate to leave this for Thursday as well because we have a personnel committee this afternoon.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to make a motion to table it and tell further information.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Same sign.
And the last item that I had, Madam Chair, is the discretionary funding application for arts and culture grants. The board had previously approved setting aside up to $15,200 for that purpose. We received two grant applications. They're in your packet for a total of $14,000. So I would take questions or discussion or a motion.
I need to recuse myself from the Art Colonies' application as I've received, I've done work for them, so I've received money there.
As brought up before, we discussed this in the Budget Advisory Committee and it was recommended that if we grant these, which I think is the process we're going through now, that we put a stipulation that it be used for youth development within those organizations such as scholarships or special opportunities. So, you know, I would hope that we would include that in a motion, ask that be done, but let's discuss it further.
Commissioner, I would point out that that stipulation was not included in the grant opening.
Oh, so we cannot.
Well, you can, again, you can do what you wish, but that stipulation was not made when the grants were advertised and I don't know that the grant specifically addressed that.
So in the grant funding application that I have here, it is to underwrite the costs of children and youth arts programs. Has this not something, has this been updated?
If that's, if that was what the request for the money was for, then it's a coincidental. I'm simply suggesting that the stipulation Commissioner Burschheim asked for was not included when we solicited the grants.
Okay.
It's typically not practiced that you would change the rules between, between submission and award.
And I can't vote on the Art Colony. Both organizations, I'm very impressed with their emphasis on youth development. I think that's an outstanding, outstanding approach to improving our community and I'm just, yeah, I'm just really impressed with that.
And if nothing else, I just wanted to state for the record that that's what was the recommendation of the Budget Advisory Committee?
Motion to approve the arts and culture grants.
Support.
Any further?
Can we separate them?
Separate.
So you can vote on one.
Okay.
I mean, I would if that's, if you're really passionate about making sure your vote gets counted for the other. I'd be willing to do that.
Just good process.
Okay. So we had a motion in a second. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor of the arts and culture grants?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes.
It's a rare opportunity. I get Bobby to smile over here.
And the second one is from, oh, I mean, sorry. I was looking at the second one, too. Anything else, Jeff?
Madam Chair, at this point, I believe the next step would be to adjourn to a closed session.
Motion to adjourn for a closed session.
Second.
And by way of practical difficulties with our AV, by that, we've decided we're going to adjourn to the adjacent room. We'll leave the video running so that when we come back, the meeting is contiguous.
Right.
So you can stay.
And you're on, and you're on video.
We're going to go.
Don't take anything.
I did. Huh? I'm not a chance. I did. I ran against Jim. Gettle. And Bruce Markson. But you know, it was Stan from Grand Ray. I have a Grand Ray address. So it's Stan from Grand Ray running for president. That one kind of.
People don't identify.
Oh, no, I did. I did. I campaigned in Schroeder. I can show you the scars. So how many lots do you have for Salisbury?
You know, I.
Well, there's different, there's 12 lots numbered, but then there's 12 lots in six. I'm not sure there's any number you can really get.
There's one, two, I don't get it. Five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12.
On the map, the number compares to 12.
13. There's probably 12 left. Yeah. Otherwise, because.
I couldn't think. I mean, and it isn't something that, it's like, you know, the ones that are on the board, on the picture, those are the ones that are, you know.
I think some of it was already dissolved, I think, 27 years ago. Was it a long time with it? First lots were sold before I lived here 21 years ago, they were already almost developed. They weren't, they weren't developed until 1997. Yeah, it's a long time. I lived here, it's the first big storm blew out of the roads. It was a dream, it wasn't designed for a heavy rain.
Yeah.
It was only after, same at Tygarden Lake.
Yeah, that was all before I got here.
Yep. Well, now this current brown area.
Right. All right, well, see you next time.
Yeah.
Somebody better go to my office and get something done.
That should be me. I'm sending the attorney a note. Is I know something that could go into a particular commission? I don't know about commissioners. I don't know the legality that we are administrative form of government statute. I don't know. I'm sorry. But I think that's, I mean, it's unnecessary to have somebody else to sign. But there are, there are times of when it's that kind of a chip will sign and they do it or so. So I don't know. I'm still learning because I asked for it. How come this one, I'm going to make sure it goes in New Cross, this one goes to Test Park. I don't know how that's decided on all these contracts and all these things where that bottom line responsibility lies. Okay. I have this curiosity. Yeah. Well, but you're here right now, so I can. You know, it's really hard to follow that, not good for people who seem to feel like they're bullying, not to ask questions because sometimes you feel like.
You feel constrained by the format?
I guess that's the way.
Because you want to, huh?
I don't, I don't know if asking questions is a form of disrespect of bullying or is asking questions, is that not part of what we are here to do, you know? And is that not the issue? I think it depends. I also have felt if I ask too many questions, that is firmly, and if I have been bullied, I would say that is building because I ask questions. Because I've asked questions. Now, I have been at the first down, it's like, it's not me. It's nobody's fault. Wrong serving of the court, but yeah. I think the bullying issue is, it is a serious problem in our community. And I saw it happen right here between commissioners, just a little bit of our, I mean, and I'm thinking, really? We just talked about it and they're doing it to each other. It's frustrating.
Yeah, we have the Noma McRae town over, you know, the Black Eyed Peas, she was verbally harassed in really bad ways in school. This is our, the Noma McRae, every Noma McRae works for the Central Association of Teachers and, right, how it ain't out, he was working for the.
They weren't here that long.
About three years. And that was, you know, like, our minister at the foundation church left pretty much because of the COVID situation. That's the best church building, that's the best description. That partially is now working, but it kind of is a social work, and she had been a social worker, she's a minister, so it's a good place to manage. So here, but it was, they would wrench the church or something, or the, I mean, that's the kind of old word for it, but it tore the place apart.
I think it's become a culture, it's lovely. We see it on the national news every single night of the week.
That's why I don't watch that.
It's pervasive and we don't even, we've stopped calling it out and saying it what it is and it just continues.
It's hard to be good, quite good, excellent, you know, somebody sending an email and that's where a lot of the foundation church emails and Facebook posts. And sometimes Facebook posts were put on for hours and then taken down and there was threats and then one, actually one person who was given basically an order not to appear at the church, sent a message to me, Mike, will you meet me on Sunday morning and walk me into, into the church so you can bail me out after I get arrested? Oh, thank you for trusting me on that. "Oh, thank you for trusting me on that." And I, we had the officer there, and I was sitting in the backseat of my car watching the situation. I was not willing to march him in the church to get arrested and then bail him out. But that's the level that it was. And he was, the individual was given the order to stay out of the church because he was making threatening comments of rape. And, you know, it's just terrible kind of thing.
Yeah, I don't know what we're going to do.
Well, matter of being civil and discussing publicly and not presuming someone has bad intentions. Isn't that a matter of...
But that's it. Just because two people disagree, I see it this way, and I see it this way. Okay, that's fine. And you should be able to say that.
I've done that most of my life pretty successfully. But, you know, there's been times, I remember after about a forty-five minute discussion with one parent about how talented her daughter was and how she wasn't doing well in my class, I said, "This discussion is ended." Because forty-five minutes was long enough to carry on.
Well, you're going to disagree, I mean.
Well, that's what it was, you know? You know, I just, you know, your daughter is in the low group seventh grade math class for a reason. I didn't put her in this group. We've, you know, I've worked hard with her for six months till she, and yes, she's making a little progress, not very much, probably, but, you know, with that kind of discussion, but it carried on for forty-five minutes. You know, it was much more than, I probably had to say, "Okay, I'm done." You know, I went to the principal, talked to him, told him what it's like, or would it, you know, the discussion might have been off again, like, you know, there was no more progress that's going to be made in this discussion, it's done, you know? And it was the end of the school year virtually already anyhow, so it really was a move, almost a move. But that's the kind of thing, I wasn't bullying that parent, I was listening, I listened as long as possible. And I just finally, I thought, and said, "No, you know, we're not getting into this, we have different views on this."
Do you know, I think that interacting in the commissioners, to me, that's saying, they don't always have to agree. They don't always have to just sit there and go, "Well, I think my question is stupid," or "I think somebody doesn't understand." You need to be upfront and say it, because the community then expects you to say, "I didn't get it." You know, "I'm on this path, and you're on that path, and we gotta figure out where, how we're gonna meet." If you don't do it publicly, when you have an opportunity, when do you do it?
I thought that was a good conversation.
Yeah.
They did a good job in setting the result.
Oh, there was another, it was a side comment between two.
Oh.
It was, yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't in the public discussion, it was a side comment.
Okay, and this, you know, I use near tears about having to ask an employee whether they're leaving because of bullying. That's really hurts me to think about that, if that could be the reason then, wait.
But that should almost be...
It is not true in this case, but, you know, it's the, we don't want our employees to leave.
Well, that's almost the first question you need to ask. In this culture where it is, is what are the reasons why you're leaving? If it's personnel issues, if it's bullying, if it's whatever.
Some exit petition?
There you go. Yes.
Can I ask you all one question on that? Do you consider Cadwell's leaving because he was bullied out?
No, I had heard a long time ago that he had his bags packed.
You don't think it had anything to do with petitions or bullying, yeah? I'm just asking you questions straight up, it just, it's, bullying's harder to define than you might think. And that pressure, that pressure. And if, I can't get into it, but I mean, it, I just...
I hear what you're saying, it's really, and when Jeff was interviewed on radio, he said, "Yes, that was certainly a factor."
A huge factor.
That's about the words he used, "That was a factor in my decision." Which wasn't the only thing, he had other reasons, he had family in Monona, and they...
Nobody comes in here and buys a house, starts a business, sells his Muskeville, and commits to a county like he did, and then get run off.
He finished building his house here.
Well, I understand, but I mean...
He took a new job.
I mean, there's people up here, there's people up here whose opinions get somehow voiced all the time. They don't even own property up here. Nothing. And for years have been technically bullying people with views. It's, I've said, you can understand, the only one who's got priority in this building right now, in this group, would be Brady, and I'm next. I've sat in his chair since Fenwick was a commissioner. So...
I've visited over the years.
You count that up, that's a long time to sit here and learn a county government and see its ups and downs and ebbs and flows, it's, um... I don't know.
I've forgotten how many Amy, Amy took out the resources work. Apparently, when she was working, I didn't realize that she had. And after Janet left, maybe, maybe after Janet left.
But no, I just curious, where you stand on that deal, because it's interesting.
There are times and there's opportunities to work one-on-one with the public. And to answer the questions and then follow through with what you say you're going to do. Do what you said. Don't cover it up, don't put it under the rug, don't blame it on somebody else. When you don't follow through, there's an element of distrust. And that distrust only, distrust only continues to grow. Yeah, I think unfortunately, Mr. Cadwell did not work well with this board. Do I think he might have worked better with a different board? I wonder. There just seemed to be a lot of friction amongst these board members.
Never stepped in the same river, you know, as to be here. Yeah, so it's, you can't tell. He was, he was the administrator of the city in Monona, so they know exactly what that is. And they have not had a county administrator in Monona for, he's, he's in a new position there. But the county and the city are so close to one, and I know, I think I look, three of their county commissioners live in Monona. So it's, you know, much, well, physically, it's a much smaller county than here, obviously. And the way that the county of Monona is a key part of that.
Isn't much of the Monona County a reservation as well? Is it totally, or just predominant?
Part of it, I'm not sure the whole, it's...
So there's a similar factor there.
There's a lot of Native American membership in the county, I mean, more than here, I think.
And isn't it agriculturally oriented?
Uh, so...
And does it have...
It's that, it's that old flat, you know?
Red River Valley's lot.
Yeah.
So it doesn't have issues of ninety percent fed state land, does it?
Uh, it might.
I think that's international.
Because it's a reservation.
Yeah, but that doesn't fall into pilting.
It doesn't fall into pilting, no.
I'm pretty sure it doesn't.
There's a couple things, there's the Tamara National Wildlife Refuge is a large part. I think Tascapark is entirely in...
In Monocity.
In Monocity, can't see the lines on the map I have, but Tascapark is either in the county or it's parts of it in the county. So, yeah, if Tascapark's in the county, yes, it's a large part of it is. And the Tamara National Wildlife Refuge is almost as big as, or maybe it's even larger than the Texas State Park. And there's the town of Monocity.
The county border.
But I think Monona is the only significant town in the county, county of Monona. Other towns are Beju and Winder and Waban, I think Waban is in the county of Gima. And White Earth is not very far south of Monona, so, the town of White Earth. I worked there back in nineteen sixty-six, you know, sometimes. Territory there a little bit. Just north of Detroit, so.
They're in private meeting right now?
Mm-hmm. And... How does it do in this, the common play firing? Oh. That's where, where the personnel issues like that. I mean, Monona doesn't have any big lakes, anything's one of them, but lots of little lakes. Did you hear the story about the Red Lake County? Red Lake Falls County?
Mm-hmm.
City of Red Lake Falls? This was, when they did a survey of local counties in America, that's the one they got from the lowest ratings in the whole country.
Oh, really?
Yeah, the city of Red Lake Falls.
Right.
That county. Well, it's a number of standards, it's, I mean, what population is, what elevation is actually one of the standards. That particular county is flat, almost. It doesn't have a lake in that county, only two or three counties in Minnesota don't have a lake. There's a Red, Red Lake, Red Falls, Red Lake Falls. It's close to Red Lake, but it's not there. So the Washington Post article appeared about that county in America. So the city contacted this reporter, invited him to come down. And, you know, it's been, it's a long time. Well, about two years ago, he moved there. And he's a Washington Post reporter now, his wife is now in the city council, he loves the place. But, you know, they rated it as, for various reasons, one of the worst places to live there. And but that's, but that's how, you know, the notion of what the bad place to live is, by one standard. You know, it's crime rates, it's economy, you know, there's a whole bunch of things that are, that are bad. I mean, I look at my old city of Minneapolis, and last week, somebody put a car in front of my apartment building, I used to live in, and it was like, oh, I didn't live there much, of course, that's thirty years, thirty, oh, no, it's almost thirty-five. You know, it was like thirty-seven years since I lived there. I mean, it's so long ago that it isn't the same community anymore at all. You know, it's a hand that you can make comparison. I bet they can compare my taxes on my house in Minneapolis. I'm paying forty percent of what I would be paying in Minneapolis right now. Forty percent.
Forty percent.
And it was, the taxes and that house, they remodeled the house, and they made it.
So what was, what's the house assessed at down there?
Four fifty thousand.
In what term, here?
About, just similar, yeah, a little, a little under four hundred. Twenty-three sixty-two. But, you know, the rates are so much different. And then that house I sold for one eighty-six back in twenty-one years. So its value is gone, but they've added two major rooms to that area. With a, a bedroom and a second floor back there, with the neighborhood of the primary. Close to three ninety-four, just west of downtown, about a half, so, literally convenient location. I did hop on my bike, I thought...
The vice compass went right through there.
I'd hop on my bike, get down to St. Thomas, where I was teaching, giving in the classroom ten minutes from the time I left. I was on my bike, you know, so extremely convenient to...
You were teaching at the...
I was an adjunct instructor at St. Thomas.
Yeah, the campus right off the peddle?
Yeah, it's on, yeah, I love, I'm from there. My older, I grew up right, I was born in Orange Park, the prosecutor, and I lived there for fourteen years. So I'm a city, I'm a pretty much a safe person. And Burnmore was almost the suburbs where they're delivering, right downtown, you know, two miles away is... Burnmore is an interesting character, say, there was not a single apartment building in that neighborhood. One community in Minneapolis that doesn't have any multiple dwellings, except there's a couple apartments involved, stores, you know, there's a, you know, reflexes, and like that. But that's one of few neighborhoods in Minneapolis that doesn't have any apartments. So it was all single-family homes, and when I lived there, oh, like ninety-six percent are sold to home by the people. And there was no, no locusts, houses in the neighborhood. The next neighborhood over was North Minneapolis, and, you know, there's almost a total different survey than I think. It was high number of rentals, small percentage of home homes. Although I think everybody was, it became a mixture of, last I lived there, it was a mixture of Hmong, Finns, and Blacks. I mean, it really, this neighborhood, it was a Finnish neighborhood for a long time, and a lot of the Finns are still there. A lot of black people moved in, and then Hmong people moved in. And there were lots of gardens, the Minneapolis Farmers Market would go post it in. And that almost died about nineteen seventy-five. Because about all that was left was the wholesale grocers would come in to the farmer's market. With bananas and oranges and, you know, and all the stuff that was in boxes from someplace else. Because there were no, it used to call truck firms, there were virtually no truck firms left in Minneapolis about nineteen seventy-five. Well, then the Hmong people started moving in, and they took, they had spaces like this, and they started making all sorts of stuff, they were, you know? So I'm probably, so it's not... And then suddenly, there were a dozen or more Hmong people, mostly growing right in the city, in vacant areas or in their backyards, kind of, and it really changed the city. And the farmer's market was starting thriving. And then other people started coming to the farmer's market. There were a wholesale of the people that were doing sausage, duck, and horse leg, bean bag, and those sort of cheese people. So the farmer's market became a thriving place again, where it had almost out. It was real close to being torn down because there was no farmer left from nineteen seventy-five. And then from nineteen eighty-five or so, I took down with two pounds of spag, filled them up for twenty bucks. Some say, "Oh, we can't possibly eat this much stuff over the next week." I could leave home at six o'clock on Saturday morning, and be home by seven with so much goodies for twenty bucks that it hurt. I really miss that, that's one of the things I miss the most of my life, a really great period.
I think fifteen pounds of purple potatoes or so.
Lots have these boxes of, what were supposed to be miniature purple potatoes. I had one that's fourteen ounces, one of the...
That's miniature, huh? Well, I probably should have picked them earlier, maybe.
Yeah, they're, well, you pick them all outside, or the rest, and get fifteen pounds last. Yeah, about fifteen pounds last Saturday. Those greens, I don't know, they're so, they're beautiful, and they're great. You know, they don't taste that much different than what you think.
It's the fun.
Yeah, it's the fun.
See, I have harvested all of my onions, just, almost all my onions, it's like, wow, wheelbarrows full of onions. I have two ones tip over, you know?
Seventy, seventy-seven, I think, zippies.
That's too many.
Well, and here's the sad story in a way, because I got lost back in September. I had one that was over five pounds. I had a couple of two-pounders and a three-pounder, I gave them, all of them, they all went to new homes. They didn't go to camp. The five-pounder was, it had a, you know, water bottle, you know, that is plastic tubes of water around the land. And so they, the water stays in that over the summer, and it keeps the temperature moderate and relatively. But one of the zippies was down at the bottom, so its shape was probably like this. I was the one that was over five pounds. Really, just, you know, I didn't, what's that thing down there?
You should have, they scooped it out, or I filled it with wonderful Italian sausage. Wow.
I guess, I think it's somebody's zippie this summer. I only planted three, I planted yellow ones, you see. And I, I had one tied bed, which is, I don't know, this is, about twenty-five quarts of, you know, compost and such. But it's off the ground, and it just had, all it had in it was one zippie. But the slugs won't give. I have slugs, I think, so. Because you're placing a wall yesterday, one that, so just a big foot long board, it was a thick board. And I took it out yesterday, it was so full of slugs. I may have been...
How far are you away from the lake shore?
About four hundred feet, I'm seven hundred feet off six to mine.
So you are, you still have that cold lake and that affects your...
But I'm up a hundred and forty feet or so above street. And backyard is at about seven fifty or so. So, you know, we get the, as a cool, but at the highway, my, I can be ten degrees cooler than highway than backyard. Because it's fifty feet elevation, just the back of my house from the highway, and that's seven fifty. You know, so it does that, and I've got a tree-lined lot, and that, the wind effect that you have. And I have a north wall, I have another fifty-foot wall on the north side of my house, so I don't get any, I don't get any north winds. So it's a, it's kind of another microclimate in a way, so, the numbers were great. And I've got fifteen acorns. And I've got fifteen acorn swatch still unplanned right now. And they're small, most of them. But I already picked ten good-sized acorn swatch. And that's.
So, you go to farmer's market and?
Well, I'd go there, I'd get bread from Trevor.
Not to sell your wills.
Because I guess, and then my partner Sue is a gardener in town. And we grow all sorts of carrots and.
Where's your garden?
First, I'm, uh, just, going across, you know, the house essentially. Garden, I'm a gardener. Wait for my two pies and I can eat anything that I have there. I froze it, and I, the parsley, it was great. It stayed. I processed it, my food processor, a huge bunch of parsley, some saffron. Processed it through a few pine nuts and a little olive oil, frozen out of port bay. But I didn't, you know, it's like almost pesto kind of thing, but no, no cheese. Sue doesn't handle berries properly that way. And I made a salad with parsley. You know, it's, I planted four little parts of plants in one little square. And it just.
Brad got a, um, for Christmas, one of these hydroponic things where you have a little starter kit, you know, it's got, you know, eight or so different kinds of.
Yeah.
Okay. And he was getting so tired of that stuff growing, he was, he finally was just, I'm not going to water it anymore. I cannot eat all of the herbs that this little thing produced. It was quite, um, beyond all expectation.
Well, I have, would probably be several bags full of, it's taking, busy rain, it's gotten wild in my so-called herb garden. And it's just not fine. And bees love it. And Mark Dibson, his bees are short ways away. And the oregano is still blooming right now. It's one of, it's been blooming for two months. I picked some of that off.
Well, I'm amazed at what continues to bloom. Daylilies are still.
I've got some that have come back. I've got roses, beautiful roses blooming. You know, real regular, one, actually, one of them's sort of crazy. It's grown six foot five. None of the tree rows are that, something, I've seen planted a long ago, but.
And hollyhocks are still growing and they're developing little buds and they're going to bloom. It's like, with.
I don't know, I'm sorry, we're trying to get across the.
Okay, so we have recessed to the closed meeting. Now, I'm going to reopen our board meeting. And I will ask Molly to provide the language for the motion.
Uh, what the county administrator is seeking is a motion to involuntarily terminate the employee as recommended by the county administrator. Effective September nineteenth, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Molly, and everyone. Okay. So, we are on employee concerns, reports, commissioner reports. Anything to report? Commissioner Dukic.
Molly, just one clarifying question. Are electeds considered employees?
For what purposes?
This resolution.
Because my, uh, yeah, because the lawyer answer is always, it depends.
Yeah. As I was just sitting there thinking that, um, if we do a resolution to support employees, I just want to make sure that includes electeds.
Well, you may wish to clarify because it can, the answer can be different depending on the context. In the employee handbook, uh, the definition of employee includes elected.
Okay. So, uh, the resolution that I worked on with Hillary Freeman is, whereas the well-being and safety of our residents and visitors is of high value, the Cook County employees provide the necessary service to accomplish this. And whereas many Cook County employees serve as professionals with dedication and determination, our community depends on the services they provide to ensure protection, safety, and health of our community. And whereas even as our system depends on county employees to serve the community, they often work in challenging circumstances and with diverse talents and true dedication, and also support their colleagues. Whereas a system has been established to evaluate county employee performance as well as to address citizen concerns. Now therefore be it resolved that the Cook County Board of Commissioners do hereby honor the contributions of all county employees in Cook County by adopting a zero tolerance policy, printed and publicized prohibiting personal attacks on county employees. So, with any resolution, the agreement of the board has been that a commissioner can bring forward a resolution and ask that it be submitted in the next packet for approval by the board. So, that is my request.
Commissioner Bershine?
If I could ask, I think I agree with the intent, but I always, oh, I always ask the question, how would we enforce this? And I guess that goes to the county attorney. If we adopted such language, I know that if you're really serious about something, you have to set up a process in which to enforce it. And, and what would your opinions be or what would be the next step in that? Because I just don't believe in passing things unless you have some kind of mechanism for enforcing it.
Uh, Madam Chair and Commissioner Bershine, thank you for that question. May I address that as part of other comments that I have on the resolution?
Sure, whatever.
Um, so, the, the board has options. Uh, when a resolution is presented to you, you can act upon it at once. You can refer it to a committee for study and recommendation. Um, you can postpone consideration to some future time or take any other action. Um, I, I'd like to just summarize. I also agree with the intent of this resolution. I very much appreciate it. I am extremely supportive of respectful dialogue, and I think I've been public about that. Um, I believe that making it personal shuts down any conversation and it stalls progress and it prevents us from finding solutions to problems because we're building walls between capable people who would otherwise work together. Um, above all of that, I am opposed to human suffering, right? And I believe that a lot of what has been printed and stated publicly in social media or in the newspaper or stated in this room has caused real human suffering, right? Those are my personal opinions about the intent of this resolution. Um, my first opportunity to review this resolution was this morning. And usually when I read a proposed resolution, I'm looking for and thinking about what authority does the board have to take this action? Um, and in this case, the action requested is to adopt a zero tolerance policy, printed and publicized prohibiting personal attacks on county employees. Um, the board has some authority to control the actions of its own staff and department heads. I don't see any authority that the board has to control the actions or words of the general public, for example. Um, the word that most concerns me here is the word prohibiting in relation to any type of speech. Um, so, the, the board can regulate time, place, and manner of speech under the First Amendment, which occurs here at board meetings. Um, you can establish guidelines for respectful communication in the employee handbook, and you have done that. We have a harassment policy. We have a sexual harassment policy. Um, these policies prohibit abusive communications in our working environments and within kind of the walls of our working spaces. Um, again, uh, we have no, I have no, I know of no known authority to prohibit personal attacks outside of this working environment, in an environment that essentially you cannot control. Um, are you, one thing to consider is if you pass this resolution word for word, are you taking on an additional responsibility to protecting county staff in those outside environments that you don't already have? And in what way are you going to, if you've signed on to that, in what way are you going to protect the staff, county employees? Um, the resolution also doesn't, um, define what is meant by a personal attack. Um, it's, which means that that term could be interpreted broadly in scope and you could, um, have some problems with First Amendment. So, does, does, must a personal attack include abusive language? Um, does it include any criticism of staff or elected officials, their actions or their words? What level of criticism is required to constitute a personal attack? Um, I looked up one definition here.
Another option is we could adopt the speak your piece resolution.
Yeah, and I'd like to address that. Um, one definition of personal attack is making an abusive remark on or relating to one's person instead of providing abuse, providing evidence when examining another's person's claims or comment. But there are other definitions out there, right? Um, other words you could use other than prohibiting. Rather than prohibiting personal attacks, we reject personal attacks. Um, or the board can resolve to support an environment of healthy debate free of personal attacks. Um, and, and the final question is Commissioner Bershine's question, which is beyond the legal effect of your resolution. The next question is, how do you enact the intent of the policy? Um, the ne, so, if you choose to pass this resolution or something similar, the next question is, what actions will you take? Um, things you do have the authority to do are to pass a resolution supportive of the speak your piece. Um, tenants, uh, that would be something consistent with this resolution. Um, you could design a process for how the county reacts when one of its county employees, uh, is personally attacked in the media or, um, in this boardroom, um, you know, enact a process. Here's how we react. We cannot prohibit it ahead of time, but this is, these are the actions we would take um, to send the message that we reject personal attacks. We don't support that kind of environment. Those are my comments. Does that go towards answering your question, Commissioner Bershine?
I think so. Um, from my experience, we only can control what is under our authority and purview, which would be employees and conduct in, on our property. And, um, otherwise, it's, uh, we could reject or not agree with or something like that. But, so I think we have to be careful about the language we use, like you addressed, and thank you.
And I don't think the intent of this resolution was to take any form of action in the future.
Okay.
It was simply to state that some people in the community are fed up. And they have not heard from us in this format that we are also fed up. So, um, I would like, the, there is a resolution for the speak your piece on the speak your piece website. We've had a, a year for commissioners who had concerns about speak your piece to investigate that. And I would like that to be on the October twenty-second agenda. I would like this also submitted, and I'm willing to have language changed by Molly. And I would like it on the agenda for us to discuss. I'm not expecting it to pass. But, you know, that's the process we agreed on with resolutions was, you bring it forward and give people time to look at it and the community to read it when it's in a future packet. But I think we've spent long enough considering speak your piece that it needs to be up in the packet for approval.
Okay. Any other comments, Commissioner Bershine?
I guess you could ask this, and I agree with you. Um, are you saying that, I guess my question is, would adopting speak your piece be sufficient? Or, I think I heard you say that you would also want a resolution.
I would like this resolution with changes in language if need be, and the speak your piece resolution in the next packet.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other concerns? Commissioner?
Um, this is Jeff's last, um, meeting of the regular Board of Commissioners. And we, he will be leaving Monday as his last day. And I just wanted to publicly recognize him here at this board meeting for the work that he's done. And, uh, I appreciate it. It's certainly not been easy work, but it's extremely valuable. And, uh, and I've learned unquantifiable amount from you. Thank you.
And, um, anything else on concerns or?
I can tell you that we had a high-speed train going way off the tracks before Jeff got here. So, thanks for putting the brakes on the train and getting it back on the track. We still have tracks to fix though, to keep the train moving.
Maintenance.
Maintenance.
Right. And we'll all be able to join him on next Monday and have a little recognition over at the brewery. So, folks are cordially invited to all that too. Commissioner Jeff?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Jeff for his work too. And, um, I was glad that he came out to Elroyal with me and seen part of my culture up in Grand Portage. And good luck at your new position in Menomone.
Thank you.
I think with that too, I mentioned it before, and I think there's some real important contributions that Jeff you've made and especially, uh, your work in public health and human services in the highway department. Uh, boy, I've been around a long time and you really worked hard and were very successful in dealing with some difficult situations. And also, uh, really helping us with the budget process, especially when I came on board. You guided us through some difficult decisions and, and it'll really help us going forward. And thank you.
And for all the areas that, um, maybe it didn't come before the public, areas that you were very strong in. I've always appreciated that. So, we have, anything else? We do have meetings to note, special meeting next week that some of us will be going to. Um, for AMC District Meeting in the, in International Falls. This Thursday, all of us will be meeting, um, together with the, um, Matt team and other things coming up, but I won't mention everything right now. It'll be posted here as to when we have our meetings together. Anything else? And we'll move on to October anniversaries.
Yeah. We just have one big one on here, but Heidi Atkins, three years in public health and human services. Stacy, thank you. Stacy, two years in our auditors. Anita Josiah, two years in public health and human services. Michael Running, two years at the Sheriff's Department. Agne Smith, three years in public health and human services. Katie Smith, three years in public health and human services. Robert Thompson, three years in the Assessor's Office. Ellis Walsh, three years in public health and human services. And Pat, if you're paying attention up there, I'm sorry that I'm going to say this out loud. Thirty-one years. It says veteran service officer in here, but many of you know she was in our public health and human services for most of this time that she's been here. We just recently moved her full-time over to veteran service because that was needed. So, Pat, thank you very much for thirty-one years.
Yes, thanks to everyone. So, we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Dave's getting to me.
Commissioner, just put a, yeah, quick thing on. Um, the idea of supporting health innovation and positive approach to any of these, or any of these things that we're talking about.
Is there anything to?
The, 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 instead of saying, and then, instead of saying, um, or if we're against bullying, we are for.